Go ahead and open this regular city council meeting at six o'clock. If you'll rise, unfortunately Pastor Keelan could not be with us tonight, but a member of her congregation, Wayne Shields, has agreed to give our invocation. Wayne?
Our heavenly Father, we come to you this evening with thankful hearts, thankful for another day you've given us to serve you, for the wonderful rains you bestowed upon us, and this evening especially thankful that we can participate in a democratic process such as this. This evening, we ask your special blessings upon the city council, that they serve you in a manner that would be pleasing to you. We also, we just thank you for everything, Lord, that you have given us, and especially for your police, first responders, and those who serve us every day. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Pledge allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next item on the agenda, we have citizens' comments. We have one citizen signed up, Mr. Chavelo Lopez.
Good evening, council. My name is Chavelo Lopez. I'm a representative for the Hondo Empowerment Committee, and our address is 1401 Fourteenth Street here in Hondo. First thing I want to talk about is the COVID. You know, I read in the paper where the COVID here in the county is already about over 150 that are people that are active with COVID. The last time I came here, I asked the mayor to, they should install a mandate for the city employees here, and I heard that the mayor from Houston set a mandate for the employees. He went against Governor Abbott's rule that nobody can set up their, no entity can set up their own mandate, and they did it, so you ought to do it here, because workers start getting sick, who's going to perform the services for the city? Next thing I want to talk about is the seven percent, the Hondo Empowerment Committee is proposing a seven percent across-the-board pay raise for all maintenance workers and paraprofessional workers also, because everything's going up, rent, gasoline, you know, healthcare, insurance, everything going up, so the workers need to get a good rate, a good pay raise, so they can start earning a living wage. Now, the other point, it's, I want to talk about, you have it in your, in your executive session, it says Cessahal and Linas, you know. First concerning Cessahal, you know, I know the city's going to give them a lot of concessions, but you're gonna, they're not going to pay taxes for so many years, maybe what, you're gonna build them a road or something, and so if they're going to come into town, they can't come in here paying minimum wages, they need to get paid, they need to pay the employees a living wage, you know, they need to have good working conditions and good benefits, you know. We don't want to bring any company in here that's not going to benefit the city of Hondo, you know, not pay the employees a good, a good wage, so they need to pay a good wage. Now, the other one is the, I saw also in the executive session that you're going to discuss Linas. Now, why isn't that being discussed, you know, in public, you know? I know that Linas is not good for Hondo, it promotes environmental racism in Malaysia, contaminating poor communities, you know, and they lie a lot. If you let them into Hondo, they say that everything they're going to bring in, they're not going to process here, it's already been processed, but they lie, once you, once you let them in, they start processing, you know? Plus, you know, a damage, an injustice to one is an injustice to all. If they're creating environmental racism in Malaysia, why do we want them here? We don't want them here. The other one is the, concerning the administrative meetings that are going on right now, I think that everything should be discussed here at the city council meeting. For example, today, I didn't get a chance to go to that meeting, so I don't know what's going on, you know? I think everything should be discussed here at the city council meeting. Thank you.
Moving on to item six, discuss and consider approving the minutes from the city council of July the 12th, 2021, a special meeting on July the 12th, 2021, regular meeting on July the 19th, 2021, expected regular meeting on July the 26th, 2021, and the July 27th, 2020 budget workshop minutes. Lot to read this weekend, hope y'all have had a chance to read those. Do we have any adjustments to those minutes?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, we have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, side?
Aye.
Against, same sign. Item number seven, city manager report.
Can you check and see if we're on, on Facebook?
Are we on Facebook? Billy, we're okay? You don't find us?
That's okay.
As far as y'all know, we're on, right? Okay. City manager report.
Good evening, mayor and council. I just have three items I want to bring to your attention this evening. This evening, obviously, on the council agenda, you're going to be setting dates specifically for the public hearings on the property tax rate and budget. We will conduct one more budget work session within the two, within the next two weeks before those public hearings. The purpose of the upcoming work session will be to discuss changes to the proposed budget that I submitted to you earlier roughly two or three weeks ago. The other item I want to bring to your attention, as far as update you regarding the roof repairs from the April 28th storm, the post office, the roof should be completed by the end of this week, depending upon weather. City Hall, the contractor will start next week on repairing the roof here at city hall, and it'll probably take five to six days to complete the repairs at city hall. On the flight training center, which is Hondo Air, the contractor has gone ahead and ordered the supplies to repair the roof at the flight training center, and it'll take roughly about three to five weeks before those materials come in. And then also, we have the recreation center, materials have been ordered, but we're looking at about eight to 10 weeks before the materials arrive, so materials, obviously, getting them on hand is a difficult task at this point, and it's kind of slowed down the process as far as repairing roofs for the city. And the final item I want to bring to your attention is a COVID update. Active cases are up from last week, were from 147 to roughly about 223. Forty-eight percent of the people above the age of 12 have been vaccinated in the city, in the county of Medina, Medina County. And one other final note I want to make is that the Medina County Health Unit is taking walk-ins for COVID vaccinations Monday through Thursday, from 7:30 a.m. till 11:00 a.m., and from 1:00 p.m. to 5:30 p.m., and that's it. Unless you have any questions, council.
You had several items on the workshop meeting, which we didn't have today. Are you going to cover any of those items in your work, in your report?
Sir, what we intend to do at this purpose, at this point, is to probably put some of these items on future regular council meetings as discussion items. You know, maybe at a later date, council be more receptive to the work sessions, and we can, you know, maybe work, move forward with the work sessions, but, you know, only having three elected officials show up to a work session doesn't make them very productive. So, we will intend, we plan to include those particular items as discussion items only on future regular council meetings, sir.
Any items here, council wants any information?
Yes, I need an update regarding the Fourteenth Street project, how they're coming along with the sewer line, and when do you expect them to finish?
David will give you an update when he talks about the change order, but right now, I think we're looking at the end of November, sir, to complete the project. There's a change order before you this evening where they're going to add the number of days.
Complete the whole project?
Complete the entire project. If you, if you recall, sir, when we were awarded the contract initially, we did not have the sewer line as part of the project. We came back and added the change order, sir, which extended the deadline.
What I'm asking is, do we have a projected time scheduled for the sewer system to be fixed?
I'll let David address that question when he steps up, sir.
Any others?
The, the end of November is the completion date for all of it? Yes, sir.
Okay.
I have a question. Scott, since you took off the work session, you canceled it, if it had occurred as scheduled for item number 10, were you going to give out a handout for the proposed changes to the budget?
Uh, no.
So that we could follow along as you discussed it?
No, sir. What I was going to do is talk about a potential work session date, so I'll reach out to council with the next day or two.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then the other thing is, in reference to the work session, I will not be attending as I see a potential for a violation of the Open Meetings Act. I don't know if Jesse wants to address that now, later, tomorrow, next week, but he can address it with you, and you can inform the mayor and the entire council with an, with an email. If it's not a potential for a violation of the Open Meetings Act, then I will entertain attending those, possibly.
The, the work sessions have been structured according to the Open Meetings Act, and they have all been approved by the city attorney.
Are those open to the public?
Yes, sir.
And you have the seating capacity there to sit hypothetically four, seven, nine, 10, 12, 13, 14, 15, about 18 to 20 people?
If we need to make that happen, yes, sir.
Well, that shouldn't be a problem, we can moving it, move it in here.
Right.
I believe I'm talking to our city manager.
I understand.
I'm talking to the city manager.
Make a suggestion.
I am speaking with the city manager.
I understand.
So, if you can accommodate, okay.
I, I'm more than willing to, I mean, if council wants to move the work sessions into the council chambers, I'm open to that. Staff and I believe the work sessions are very productive. As far as educating council on upcoming agenda items, we would like to continue, continue moving forward with them, but since we've had such a low response from the council members attending, at this point, we don't feel, find them productive.
Well, I want to tell you one thing, Scott, like I told you before, we've been having city council meetings for years, starting at 6:00 p.m., whether it has been Monday or Tuesday, and I don't feel that we should have a session before a council meeting to update, we should be prepared, by the time we get here, we should be prepared for the meeting. We don't even have an hour explanation on what we have, if we have, we get this a few days before the council meeting, and we have any questions about it, we should be asking you, the mayor, or somebody else to do that.
Sir, it's more than about...
And I'm telling you right now, like I told you before, I am not going to attend those sessions.
I, I understand that, Johnny, you're the only one who is opposed to the work sessions, everybody else...
I thought you was too.
No, he wasn't.
Until now.
No, he wasn't. I agree with you that the work sessions are, they're more than just the, the current agenda that's before you in the evening, they're about preparing you for future agenda items.
These, these 10 items that you have in the session for the day that was canceled, all this information ought to be discussed here at the city, regular city council meetings.
After visiting the city attorney a couple of times about the concern about the open meetings law, I feel, I still have a concern about the fact that we don't have the availability of seating over there, so it discourages people possibly from attending. I think if you move the meetings over here, add them an open session, I think most of the council will be willing to attend.
We will move the work sessions over to the council chambers. So, my understanding is that council's comfortable with the work sessions starting at 5:00, as long as they're being held in the council chambers.
No, four members, or, I'm not.
Yes, I am. I am.
I'm not going to attend the sessions.
So...
It was very productive, the, the first time we held them, it was very good, and it would have been better if we had more participation. I, I couldn't make it today, and I apologize.
Well, you didn't have a chance.
It was canceled today.
Oh, no, I couldn't make it, that's...
Even, even then, Scott, some people, a lot of people, I can see one item right here, item number five, one of the restaurants that might be excited about that will not be here at 5:00 because they're open for business, I'm talking about that mobile food court.
Actually, sir...
So, that, that, that's irrelevant as far as where you're going to have it, you can have it at the fair building for all I care, but a lot of people aren't going to make it, and a lot of our people, a lot of our citizens, they're concerned about, out of those 10 items that you had scheduled for the works, work session, I'll bet you there's going to be people watching, we got 56 right now, that are, that they want to know, hey, what's going on with some of these issues, like that mobile food court, the budget, Fourteenth Street, that's 300, oh, personnel and admin fees, reconnect fees, I'll bet you there's over 100 people wanting to know about that.
Yes, sir.
But at 5:00, a lot of people are just getting out of work, are just driving back into town from work, so they're not going to make it.
Right, yes, sir.
They're not going to make it, I mean, I, I...
Do you have a recommended time, sir, the whole work sessions?
No, I mean, I, again, these work sessions, these 10 items, that, that's a full council meeting right there.
Yes, sir.
I mean...
And again, the purpose of the work session is for staff to have open dialogue with council regarding how they would like to see these specific projects move forward. The specific food court that you're speaking about is actually someone who's not in the city, and we're trying to attempt to get some feedback from council in order to give more clear dialogue to the applicant in how to move forward with the, the food court before they file an actual application.
Well, I think you heard a consensus of concern, we can move on with changing the location and, and trying to get most of the members here.
So, mayor, is it my understanding that we'll hold the work sessions in the council chamber, and they'll be held at 5:00?
Unless the council wants to have them at 6:00, just prolongs the evening, but that's up to the council.
Well, if it's going to be at 6:00, mayor, why can't you put these items on the agenda and we just go from there, instead of having to say one session for updates and another session for council meetings, it all boils down to the same thing.
We can do that, sir.
I think he explained why we're doing it...
I'm just, you don't, I don't need your opinion, if you want an opinion, give it to him, don't give it to me, I'm giving my opinion.
Mayor? Moving on.
Okay.
Any other questions?
What we, what we'll do for the next meeting, mayor, is that we'll include our work session items on the regular agenda as discussion issues only.
How about a compromise, have it at 5:30 instead of 5:00, in the council meeting at 6:30? Concern that Councilman Eteart, you had about people being able to tune in.
I'm, I'm okay with that.
I'm okay either way.
Okay.
Whatever we need to do to take care of the city's business, that's what I'm, that's what I'm...
Okay.
Any other questions on, the city manager on his report?
Sure.
Thank you. Number eight, briefing on the upcoming Southwest Texas Junior College 2021 fall courses to be offered at the, at the training center, Luis Fernandez.
Good afternoon, Mayor Deener, council. My name is Luis Fernandez, I am the Business Industry and Technical Studies Division Chair from Southwest Six Junior College, and I have my colleague with me here today, Mr. Jesus Suarez, he's our Allied Health and Human Services Division Chair as well. So, just to speak to you a little about the course offerings we have here in Hondo, at the Hondo South Texas Regional Training Center, we do have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 16 total courses that we're, we are offering this fall semester. Some of the complete, complete programs that we're offering is currently is our welding program that falls under my division. The welding program right now, we have about six students enrolled so far, and we've had plenty of calls from a lot of people interested in welding, just seems to be like welding is back, welding is a very popular program right now at this point, because even our sections, Uvalde, sections in Eagle Pass, our capacity, we've had to open more sections just because welding seems to be a hot topic again. Why, we're not too sure, but we'll take them, right? So, and we had a cohort last year that went through, we had six students go through the welding program last year, and they did all very well, and so we're hoping to have another good group this year. And we do have a mixture of both female and male students in the welding program, which is great, you know, to have those non-traditional students on our, on our programs as well. We also have our HVAC program, that one's just continued to struggle a little bit to get any bite from the community, but we do have some flyers that we send out to Ms. Genevieve Floris, so that she can post and promote and push it, and of course, we do some promotion through our social media website, page on Facebook, through Southwest Junior College to try to promote and get more people in that, in there, but we just haven't had too many people buy it on the HVAC. You would think so with the, being at a industry, especially in an industry, the technical field right now, it's our, our, you know, a lot of retirees, so you'd think there'd be people wanting to fill those shoes, but for some reason or other, they're not quite coming in that field as they are in welding. Another program that I'll let my, our, my colleague here, Mr. Suarez, talk a little about, more about is our PCT program as well, which is our Patient Care Technician, and I'll let him speak a little bit on that.
Good evening, mayor and council. So, like Mr. Fernandez said, I am the Division Chair of Allied Health and Human Services, and one of the programs that we offer here is the Patient Care Technician program. This program offers four certifications in one year. It is CNA, Certified Nurse Assistant, phlebotomist, EKG, and Medical Assistant, and so we've been working real close with Ms. Floris to try to get that program going here. We currently have one student enrolled, we're trying to get more, and meeting with the, the regional hospital, they've, they've showed interest in hiring people who've complete this Patient Care Technician program, because as you can tell, they would rather hire one person with four certifications and hire four different people. So, we're, we're hoping that, that the program grows here. It's really grown big in the, in the school districts as dual credit, and so we've been reaching out to Hondo ISD to try to get, try to get that program in there, in, in the Hondo school district as well. But, but yeah, that's, that's, it's a very great program, it's blown up ever since we started it about three years ago, and, or I'm sorry, four years ago, and so that's one of the programs that we're offering here as well. Thank you.
And continuing on, we do have some academic courses as well, we have accounting, we have sciences, biology, lifespan, hu- human growth and lifespan growth and development, psychology class, art appreciation, composition, computer class, nutrition. We're trying to give a little bit of offering of, a little bit here and there, so students can complete their degree, and also, if you notice, some of the, like the human growth and development and nutrition, those are kind of geared towards people want, maybe getting to the nursing program or, or radiology program, those are some of the prerequisites in there, so it gives the Hondo students an opportunity, instead of having to go all the way to Uvalde to get those classes, they can get them here in Hondo. We do have some distance learning opportunities for them, some Zoom, because, you know, we have some people that are still concerned about, you know, with the COVID cases going up, so they're able to log in through Zoom and be able to still see their instructor at specific times, so instead of going to the actual center, they would be, they can do it from home, login, it's really was a, kind of a, I hate to say, use this phrase, but a blessing in disguise with the Zoom, because now people that work, they have a hard time getting to class at 5:30 or 6:00, you know, we've had people, you know, pull over on the side of the road and they turn on their, on their phone, and they're able to log into class and get their class going. I know for example, myself, I had a student here from Hondo in my colleague's Sescos course that I taught in the evening, she wasn't able to quite make it to Uvalde, but being that I had it in Zoom, she was able to get in and get that course and get moving, so she was really appreciative of that. So, we do have those offerings, and I believe you have, you might have it in front of you, the course offerings that I have, and I'll leave these here with the, as more, so anybody from here in the audience may want some copies, they can take them, but it shows the times that we're offering the classes, the dates. For Mr. Suarez's PCT program, we do try, we are trying to have two cohorts, one in the morning and one in the evening, to try to attract two different cohorts, because, you know, some of my people may be okay with the morning, evening may not work out, and those that work during the day, the evening program will work for them as well. Our welding program and HVAC, both are evening programs, because majority of those that are in it are non-traditional students that are currently working, that five o'clock start, it really works out for them. Although our instructor, Mr. Valdez, I have asked him to be pretty flexible with the students, because we know sometimes they have to drive, you know, from wherever they work, get out at 5:00, make it, so if they make it at 5:30, 5:20, we work with them to make sure that they're successful and still can join the program, and not be like, well, darn, I can't make it because you're going to call me absent. No, I've, I've visited with him to try to work that out with our students. So, we also have some pamphlets that we'll leave here as well for you on the different programs, kind of, you know, earnings and things of that sort. Any questions that you may have?
Couple of questions. First of all, I think this PCT program is a great program, and, and I'd like to see more of our kids, high school kids, and all get involved in it. It takes a place, right, of the CNA courses that we had before?
Yes, sir, correct, and, and the benefit, like Mr. Suarez just say, it's four, four certifications you're able to get in that one year, instead of just one year taking you to do a CNA program.
We had great demand for those CNA courses.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, and that's what we're seeing around the area, especially in the Eagle Pass, Del Rio, Crystal City, Corizo, just that program's just blown up. I think we were close to over 300 students overall enrolled last year alone, just between high school districts and, you know, regular communities that we're doing, and Uvalde, we still, we started off with one cohort, then we added an evening cohort, and then we had to add a midday cohort just because of the demand that is out there, you know, a lot of the nursing homes are, some of our biggest employers for that, because there's just a shortage in CNA, and when they see, okay, you got a CNA, you're a phlebotomist, you're an EKG, and you're a medical assistant, man, come on.
What about Sabanow, I know they sent some students over here last year?
Yes, sir, we have had this, I've actually been involved with a discussion with them, some programs they're trying to bring in with the technicals, they're looking at welding as well as one of the areas, and so we did recommend them to reach out to Ms. Genevieve Floris to get any specifics on it and how they can make that work, but they did mention in the last call was with them, because they were trying to get a PTEC, with the, PTEC program with their high school students to basically get their certificate in welding while they're in high school. So, we did, they let them know that's an option, so if you want to reach out to Ms. Floris, to be sure to reach out to you all, and so they might be reaching out to Ms. Floris here in the near future.
Yeah, the question I have, I know we're, next push we're going to have is diesel mechanics.
Yes, sir, correct.
And we're in the process of getting equipment, et cetera. How, how, how popular has that program been in the other cities?
In Eagle Pass, which is where we have it, it's full already, it filled up, it's one, another one of our popular programs, we have 15 seats, and they filled up quick, we have a waiting list, but of course, we're limited with space and limited with number of equipment, we have in Eagle Pass, but that's an industry that we're seeing that's blowing up as well, you know, we have a lot of now, you know, with the two, was it now two or three dealerships out in Casterville, that's drawing a lot of people wanting to get diesel mechanics, because those are also going to the retirement age, and there ain't many around the area, so we are, Ms. Floris did reach out to us, so we'll, we'll work with her to get her numbers as far as prices for equipment, equipment she'll need, to try to see if we can make it happen here in Hondo for real as well, but it is another popular program that we have, diesel and welding, and the reason, really diesel, the other reason why diesel's so popular is because, you know, the natural pipelines that we see running through, a lot of those engines are all diesel engines, so the same engine that they're working on on a rig, are the same ones they're using out in the pipeline, so we have, we've had AEP reach out to partner with us as far as wanting fleet mechanics to come out for AEP, we've had Dicky's, the manufacturing that's reached out to us to try to partner with us, and Energy Transfer that wants, they're just waiting for those kids to come out, I say kids, but some are older students as well, but they're ready to hire them and, and get them going out there in the field as soon as possible.
Any other questions, council?
Yes, the, these 15 students that are already registered, that the program is full, where are these people from?
In Eagle Pass, they're all, we've actually had about two of them from Uvalde that go down, they basically, they're driving from Uvalde every day to Eagle Pass to get it, and then some are coming, they're from local Eagle Pass, and we have, I believe I have one from Del Rio that's also traveling over to Eagle Pass, and the rest are just in the community, and like I said, we have wait lists that are just wanting to come over, and of course, we have a lot of US citizens that do live like in Piedras, that work in the Maquiladoras and stuff like that, that are coming over to take classes, they crossing the border every day, as, because they are legal citizens, so we can take them as regular students, so they are enrolling in these programs as well.
If, if you happen to know these people that are on, on the waiting list, are, are these students from, from the area also that would benefit Hondo having a diesel mechanics here, a school here at college?
Yes, sir, so when we promote, we promote all our, all our options that we have, so our schedules, so they can look at diesel, and then it shows wherever it's offered, so like our Uvalde students are always asking, you know, can I take diesel, what's in Eagle Pass, so they'll drive down there and do it, so if we were, if we did one here in Hondo, we would promote it and say, hey, if you're from Sabanow, Uvalde, you have a choice now, you can drive over to Eagle Pass or drive over to, to Hondo for the same program.
Great, that's great. We appreciate you all very much and much bringing to our community.
Thank you, Mayor Deener, and thank you, council. Appreciate it. Appreciate it.
Item number nine, discussing, consider the following dates for a public hearing, budget ordinance reading, and a council meeting to adopt the budget and tax rate for fiscal year 2021, 2022.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight I present to you two dates for the voter approval tax rate, which is, has changed from our budget work session. We got our calculation from the county. It is proposed at point 486. So we are proposing the date of August 23rd for the first reading of the budget ordinance, and then September 20th, which would be the public hearing for the tax rate, as well as the adoption of the budget ordinance, the adoption of the tax rate, and also the rate change ordinance and the increase in revenue for the adopted tax rate as well. So August 23rd and September 20th.
So the tax rate actually decreased just a little, right?
Yes, sir. Currently, right now, we're at point 4940, so we decreased by point 01.
So the first meeting, reading of the parents will be on the 23rd?
Yes, of the budget ordinance. And then the public hearing for the tax rate will be September 20th, which will, we will also adopt the budget and then adopt the tax rate to follow.
The public hearing on the 23rd will be also?
Yes.
That's actually a council meeting, right?
Yes, it's a regular council meeting. September 20th would be a special council meeting, it'd be a Monday.
Okay. So what do you need for us to do tonight? Approve those two dates?
Yes, we need to take a record vote on the public hearing dates.
Let's take a record vote, which means I'll poll the council.
You should have a motion in front of you, Mayor.
So motion to set the public hearing for 2021, 2022 budget for August 23rd, and the hearing for the 2021, 2022 voter approval tax rate of point 4866 on September 20th.
Is this a record vote?
Sorry, did you give me that motion?
Turn it over.
Yes, it was on top, it's on your council.
There should be a revised motion in front of you, Mayor.
It's on there, okay.
I think on the top you have a note as well.
All right. Council, you've read, you've seen the motion. Do I have a, go ahead and make the motion, one of you.
I made the motion already. Can you want me to read it?
Yes, sir.
Motion to set the public hearing for, for the 2022, 21, 22 budget for August 23rd and the hearing for the 21, 22 voter approval rate tax rate at point 4866 on September the 20th. With both the budget and property tax rating being considered for adoption on September the 20th.
You have a second?
Second.
Record vote, Mr. Villa?
Yes.
Heiser?
Yes.
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 Motion carries. All right, going on to 10, discussing, consider the resumption of the enforcement of utility disconnection and administration fees.
Yes, so we previously brought this to council and you all wanted to table it. I did a calculation attached to it. This is off of the numbers that we disconnected for July. We had 36 accounts. I broke down the average amount of fees we would have taken, which would have been $2,300. I did labor cost of the guys going out and disconnecting for five hours, two guys per each crew, and then the hour of the utility billing staff. So as you can see, it's roughly cost us just in labor around $1,300 and we're bringing in around $2,300 if we enforce those fees again.
That's a one month?
Yes.
And the one month labor was 1286?
Yes.
So we resume, that's what we would be resuming effectively every day?
Yes, if we were to resume, it'd be four accounts, it's a $40 reconnect fee and then $15 per meter service. So it could be up to 70 extra dollars on, on your disconnection.
Only question I have is the admin fee, what, what does that really cover?
That's the admin fee that goes to the general fund. It's, I'm assuming to absorb the cost of utility billing. It's $15 per metered service. So if you have water and electric, you'll pay an additional $30. If you just have one service, you'll pay the $15.
But it covers what costs, the utilities people or?
Yes, yeah.
Internal labor?
Yes, internal labor.
Have a utilities department?
Yes, yes, sir.
That's the only thing that seems a little steep to me. Anyway, see item council, do we have a motion?
Some move.
You have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Does this to go ahead and reinstated, right?
As of?
It would be this month in August if you all pass on it tonight.
August bill?
Mm-hmm.
Any further discussion? I don't pay the motions, aye. Aye, yes, motion carries.
Mayor, I, I didn't vote for that.
Sir, you didn't vote for it?
No.
Vote in nay or did you vote?
Nay.
Okay.
You didn't give enough time to say nay.
Okay, I'm sorry. Motion carries 41. Item number 11, discussing, consider a change order in the amount of minus $2,023.50 to contract with RL Jones for a 14th Street project to add work for adjustment of manholes and utility meters.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. On July 26th, we came before you with a change order number one for the 14th Street project to add the sewer replacement before they paved the street in the amount of $102,175. We're now, at that time, we advised you that we would need to come back for change order two for the adjustment of the, the water valves and the manhole covers for the paving. We took that under scrutiny, looked at everything, and we're proud to come before you tonight with a change order for a credit of $2,023.50. And this change order also incorporates the lowering and raising of the manholes and the water valves, and in addition, a 67-day extension to the original contract completion date for the 14th Street project. And to answer the question earlier, the sewer line is slated to be finished this Friday in its entirety. So they will then move to the street rehab.
How soon, yeah, how soon before they start that?
Immediately, same crew.
Good.
They're going to start immediately, immediately on the street?
Yes, sir.
So it'll take care of all the mess that's out there?
Absolutely.
They're moving fast. Looks like they're doing a good job.
And then will the mess start back down on the other ends then, when they start on the street?
I believe so. That's my understanding. I'd have to verify that. There's more work at Avenue U. They'll be adding curbing and stuff there, so that'll, that'll be more time consuming. So my assumption is they would start on the end where they can be productive and open up as much of that road as possible.
Maybe the county will be through with their work by then.
Right.
But they are going to start everything from Avenue U working east, right?
No, sir, I believe they're starting Avenue M working west.
Sorry, that's not what I just heard. So you're now you're saying it's starting with M and going that way?
I'll verify.
Because I think the gentleman that spoke to us last time said that they were going to start from Avenue U east.
Because of the ongoing construction, I believe is what he said.
I think that was before the, I think that was before the sewer line. Maybe they may have changed that because, so.
I'll verify.
He did, you're, you're right, Johnny. He did, he did say he was going to start west of town.
I'll verify and have a memo to you in the morning.
We need the county to get through. Any other questions, Mr. Baker? Have a motion to approve his change order?
Second.
We have any other discussion? Paul, pay the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Yes, the motion carries. Item number 12, discussion regarding the American Rescue Fund that's been put on 10 about councilman Torty.
Scott gave us a printout, and it emulates, well, almost the same of what I had found. And I just wanted it on the agenda so, so we would not forget about these funds. There is a committee that was set up months ago. We have yet to meet, discuss what we could have used the monies for. But I had already printed what Scott gave us, and here's what I pulled from online. And I highlighted what he sent us in the email. This is what Scott sent us in the email. And I actually read it and I got highlights. I'm getting the general idea of what we can discuss whenever the committee meets as to where we can use these funds. And it's, I think we got plenty of what I've highlighted here available, not only to help the, the city itself in the, some of the sewer issues, but our citizens can be used for both. And I hope that we do. I hope that we use this money wisely because if we don't use it, according to the last page here, it, the state will reclaim it. So hopefully our committee that has been set up will meet soon. That committee consists of the mayor, city manager, myself, and councilman Heiser. And do we have a projected delivery of the funds?
I would have to ask.
I'm sorry.
We haven't received anything yet. I did the steps required to start, to us be issued the funding. They said it would be sometime in August that we'd get our first payment of it, so just waiting to see it in leaving accounts.
I think the state is under some kind of deadline from the federal government as to when they need, by a certain date, they've got the special funds, right?
Yes, yeah, we've already, we had to go onto TDM and upload all the required documents which mayor signed. They said it should be by like the 15th, 16th of August, the middle of August, that they are, I think by the end of August, they're required to have it issued out to the municipalities.
I know a couple of weeks ago, and about two months ago, when I emailed you and the city manager about more or less how much. So now that it's getting closer to the delivery of the funds, do we have, not above or further, but almost to the penny what we might get?
I have that to the penny amount I can give you. Off the top of my head, it's 1.1 million, it's about 1.2. When they did the allocation again with, when the state received the funding, our amount did increase. Before it was 2.06 million, now it's going to be 2.338.
1.169.
Yeah. So we'll get about 1.2 million. I can give you the.
We're getting half, right?
Yes.
We're getting half.
Yes.
And when do we get the second?
We'll get it summer 2022.
A year later.
Yeah. So a year out. And then we have till 2024 to spin the funding.
So 1.29 is what we'll be getting sometime in August?
I'll give you, I'll get you the exact number, but yes, it, it would be the split of 2.338 million.
Can you send us an email, Judy, whenever you do get the funds?
Oh, definitely.
And Scott or Mayor, whichever one, can Judy be part of that committee?
Absolutely.
That the mayor?
Oh, yes, Paul.
Welcome to the committee.
Thank you.
And understand, this is a committee of the council that will be making recommendations to staff as to where, what we think would be a good way to spend the funds.
So as of?
Have to come back to council, as council's a full, full body to make the final decision.
As of now, nothing of that money has been allocated for anything?
Well, city manager allocated some of it in the budget.
But we put a hold on that.
Who's we?
Well, we, last time we discussed it, we, we decided that we're going to put it until we can discuss it.
That's true.
Yes, we did, we were discussing funds being used for the AMI.
So, okay, my question again, so nothing has been allocated for anything now until the committee meets and then council approval?
Correct. And I would assume that'd be done before he has his meeting on the budget in two weeks, whatever you're going to do.
Yes, sir.
Right.
Because there are several things that this money can be spent for, as councilman Torty said, can be spent like we, last time around, we did a payment out of small businesses. We could do some utility help or landlord help, whatever. We could do a lot of different things for the public that are allowable under this, under this act.
Hey, Scott, and that, it says here that it can be for revenue loss, but it only, the only example that says here in the printout from your email is because of a decrease in hotel motel tax. What about the revenue loss for the electrical disconnect?
If you can prove that there was any revenue loss as far as from the previous fiscal year before COVID had started, had started, then it would be considered a loss. You have to be able to prove like there's a drop in sales tax or hotel motel tax.
From the previous year to?
So let's say before COVID had started, you had collected X amount of dollars when it comes to hotel motel tax or sales tax or electric rates. I think electric rates would be questionable. And then you get into COVID year and you saw a drop in your hotel motel tax would be, which would be likely because you don't have as many people traveling and staying in your hotels, or you don't have as many people going out and purchasing products in stores because of COVID and everything shut down. You had a decrease in your revenue. So then they would come back and provide you a check based upon what that decrease in your revenue would be.
And off of that, and I'm reading here some of the stuff that I highlighted, it says, well, impacts on households and individuals.
Okay, before you go into that, still on the motel hook there, you said that they would reimburse you if there was a loss for that?
If you could prove there was a loss, and there's, yes, sir, and there's a specific formula in the federal register as far as how you determine what that loss is, and we would have to follow it.
My question was going to be, is it, is this included in what we're getting or above what we are getting?
No, it includes what? So Judy, Judy mentioned you, you're receiving $2.3 million. So you have $2.3 million. And if you can prove that there was a loss in your hotel motel tax during COVID, whatever that loss is, you could take out of that $2.3 million.
Or you can take that.
Right. And put it into your hotel motel tax.
It would be included and what we're getting.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Hey, Scott, it's, last, last one I promised, to piggyback off what my original question, under impacts on household individuals, you look at the third subparagraph, assistance to households. It says utility assistance. Would we be able, how would we be able to determine yourself or Judy, whomever it is that's going to be doing that, like the people that we have on arrangements, Judy? How could we determine to apply that utility assistance that I'm reading here for those ARPA funds to be utilized for that? Of course, speed up the process of payment and possibly decrease our loss? And I'm just, because I'm reading, it's a good handout that you sent me.
Yes, sir.
And I'm reading it.
Look, the federal register sent out about, I think it was a 39, 40-page document on how the American Rescue Plan funds can be spent. A lot of detail. So when you speak specifics regarding how we can utilize funds towards utility decreases, we're going to have to look into that a little bit further if that's a desire of the committee that they want to represent to the county unless, Judy, you want to expand on that?
Well, when we got CARES grant funding, this was also a route that council wanted to take. What we did at that time, mayor formed a committee. We had an application process for utility customers to come in and apply. Then we had the requirements. If they met the requirements, then they were issued utility funding. If it's, like Scott said, some route you all want to take, we could pursue that route again. It seemed to work, but we didn't get a whole lot of applicants. I think we only issued 25 different payments to individuals. As for COVID payment arrangements, I believe we only have four that are still on COVID payment arrangements with the highest amount being, I think, roughly $600. $600. So a lot of those have been paid down.
The payment arrangement came in more handy than anything else?
Yes, yeah. With the committee that we did for the utility rebate grant, there was requirements that had to be made and a lot of individuals weren't qualifying. But we granted around 26 households funding.
Well, just be ready because when we have our meeting, it's coming from me as far as this subparagraph three. And thank you for sending it, Scott. I was on page 13 of that thing and I had to restart like twice. Thank you.
Any other questions of Judy?
No.
Anything on American Rescue?
Yes, sir. Just have a quick update on item 11. Contractors plan is to start at Avenue M and move towards you.
He's going to start on M?
Yes.
Okay. I don't know if that's what we wanted to. Okay.
That was a change.
That, sir?
That was a change of what he said two weeks ago, three weeks ago. And I'm not the only one that heard it.
The sewer, no, I heard it too. But I think the sewer must have had something to do with that.
Yeah.
Because I.
So we'll, we'll, we'll follow up with the contractor. Council's belief is that we're supposed to start at Avenue U. We'll find out and.
Can you find out why they decided to switch?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. That completes the regular agenda going into executive session at 6:49, which we will utilize the chambers. Anybody who wishes to wait until the executive session to utilize the area behind the daisies here where it's cooler.